Yeah, a special work session with the treasurer called to order. This is regarding.
The deficiency that we have.
Financial report.
In the financial report, right? Specifically, if you look at that letter in the back. Communication and management. The bottom paragraph, cash reconciliation, repeat finding. And Jack can probably go through it better than we do. My understanding is the way that items are posted to the accounts by the bank and others doesn't match with the way we reconcile things because they do it different.
Yeah, what's happened over the last several years is that once we started taking E F T electronic transactions.
Right.
The, in order to record, the reconciliation is not every month. However, at the end of the month.
Hi.
Oh, yeah, he was actually, I was gonna go.
We didn't have.
Join us at the table.
This could affect your time. So the auditors are concerned about the audit, the bank reconciliation process. Now, it's changed over the years because of the E F Ts that were, were doing more and more E F Ts all the time. And.
It's that last paragraph on that page.
What, what happens is when you do, when you do a deposit with E F Ts, your daily worksheet, your E F Ts are mixed in with your checks and all of that stuff. So I get the reconciliation piece and I can certainly see the cash deposits in the bank fine. And I can reconcile those with no issue. But what the issue really is, and it's more so for Jackie than for Heather. But when I get a slip from Jackie, she'll have, especially during big tax time, obviously, will have 25 checks and 15 E F Ts on one receipt. You know, one posting.
Total, right.
So one posting. Well, in the bank, when I look at the bank deposit, I see the cash part going in fine. But the 12 or 15 E F Ts are not one deposit in the bank. It doesn't show up as one deposit in fact. It shows, and there might be two in one deposit on the bank. There might be three in another one. They're all messed up. So there's no way to say, okay, well, because the bank doesn't give us a slip, or doesn't give me a slip, saying, okay, this E F T that shows up in this transfer includes this one, this one, and this one. So there's no way of knowing what they are. So it's always impossible at the end, even at the end of the month or any time during the month, to say every single one of those is hit. At the same time that Jackie gave you a slip or you gave me a slip that had these E F Ts on it. So we're doing the reconciliation, but in order to tie that out at the end of the month, it's almost impossible because you don't know what hit. You may have recorded something that the bank recorded two days afterwards on their side. And maybe the following month on their report, by the last eight months, you do put it in the month before. It's almost impossible to know that. The only solution would be to change everything we've done where cash deposits are on one posting and all the E F Ts are individually done. Every single E F T is not on an individual posting. To try to say, okay, so now if you're a tax man, you've got 15 E F Ts coming in, you'd have to do 15 individual postings for every single one of them. For me to be able to look at that and try to tie it into whatever the bank did, which is, which is less.
Can I pull something out of your treasurer's thing?
Sure. You probably want to do.
Do August, a week in August.
Well, you probably want to do something where you got a lot of, a lot of E F Ts. July, maybe where, yeah, July treasurer is where there's a lot of activity.
So Jack, the only thing I can see too, and I get it, I don't even know how to even begin to do all that. The only thing I think that maybe has been a little bit more helpful for us is that Hartland has been providing that daily receipt for us, which hopefully helps a little bit. But I understand sometimes they both close together as well as what might be coming into the bank. But the other thing too is that I have that challenge for me is far as what my daily work has to tie up to the state. So that's another, I mean, I suppose in our cash receiving, I could still do a separate, it's just.
Yeah, and even in the, if you do, if two of your deposits go to the bank on the same day.
Right.
There may very well be the transfer to the state in one number, not.
Two numbers.
Not the two separate numbers that are, that are there, which is so for the, for the motor vehicle transfer, ordinarily, you would think, okay, it's going to be very, very clean.
Yeah, right.
But if you dig two deposits on one day, the bank maker will just group those together.
If I do my electronics.
So then to pull those apart, the bank, you know, I don't know what the bank has done necessarily.
Right, right, right.
So it's, you know, I go through and I say, okay, well, I'm assuming from the first to the end of the month, you know, all of those transfers to the state D M V have happened the way it's supposed to happen because I don't have all the details exactly what the bank did.
Right.
We're not the only municipalities that's dealing with this issue, right?
Well, no, I'm sure every municipality is dealing with it. Now, whether there's a different way of doing it within MuniSmart or if there's a different way that a bank can give us information. I don't know if this of our auditors audit other municipalities because if they do.
And I'm not suggesting that we reinvent a wheel. I, I guess where I'm coming from is they've flagged this as a repeat concern of theirs. So if something doesn't match what they'd like to see, do they have a suggestion of a way to do it that will be, that will be easier to follow and make sure everything ties up correctly? Are there, you know, are there other municipalities that do it in a way that's, you know, let's not, not make it overly complex, but on the other hand, when they come and audit it, they want to be able to go to the numbers and say it all ties out. When it doesn't tie out, then, then there's always opportunity for something to go off the rails.
So do we generate deposits on these E F Ts? How do we do that in your work?
Yeah.
So this is what I give Jack. I give my daily work, my daily deposits. And here it says all deposits, cash, check, cash, checks, and electronics. And he, he checks it off, so I assume that because I found it. And so he goes into this, which is.
The detail.
The detail. And over here, it says right here, there is. I mean, this part isn't a good one.
That's an easy one, yeah.
But still, with every, you know, there's some that all, they're all E F Ts.
Okay, yeah, well, this one, this one's, this is maybe a better example, okay? Here's, here's a bunch of E F Ts, or this happens real one slip, okay? And there's $14,000 worth of E F Ts. But I'm not going to see a deposit or a transfer from the bank for the $14,000 worth of E F Ts in one deposit because I'm going to see maybe, maybe those two and that one lumped together.
So when you, so when you take a cash deposit, that'll show up as a total on that deposit. I mean, the cash and checks, right? Physical stuff you take to the bank, that'll show up as one deposit, but the E F Ts will all show up individually.
Yeah, like this, like this particular day, right? Here's all the, all the activity. The cash deposits are $152,000. I see that in the bank as a cash deposit, 152 grand. The $14,000 of the E F Ts are made up of, we got one there for $795. We've got one here for $14,000. Now, you would think that $14,000 and the other one would be on one deposit, not necessarily.
Yeah, because they hit the bank at different times.
They hit the bank at different times. So, so certainly at the end of the month, I'm saying, okay, I'm assuming everything is hit. The checks and the cash and all that, no issue. I've verified every single transaction. But the E F Ts, I don't know. And in MuniSmart, when you do a bank reconciliation, the entire day shows up as the deposit. So I see the cash coming in. So do I reconcile that cash? But I can't separate the deposit within bank reconciliation. I can't separate it to say cash and E F T. Now, if we separated the cash and the E F Ts into two separate transactions, then all the cash will be clean, which might be the better way to do it. So all the E F Ts without, unless the auditor says you have to do it individually, which would be.
Now Jackie, what, what triggers you to enter an E F T in MuniSmart?
I get an email from Voice Cloud and from Avatar saying that someone has paid online. So then I go and print out the email. Then I have to go into my tax collect system and go up and hit payments online. Hit that, and then I have to, another button, I want to see them or something like that. So then I match them against what I printed out from my email. Hit, okay, apply payments from the email. So that email, so it tells that email that I've gotten them. Then I have to go in and say, okay, process them into collect. Another list or whatever, hit that, and okay, it matches. So then I hit apply payments to the tax bills, to the accounts. And I print out another thing.
What triggers you, what triggers your entering it in the system is correspondence from somebody that says, or from the payment processor that says they're taking electronic payments.
The emails, yeah, and the problem, yeah. And see, the problem with that is the email she's getting that says the electronic payment has been made has no relationship to when it actually hit the bank.
Exactly.
Right.
Right, if that's right on it, it's probably a three-day wait.
Right.
Right.
It says that to the person. That email that I get has gone to the payer and says, okay, this is, and it'll be a three-day wait anyway before it's.
Right, and that's, and that's, see, that's the issue. We're not getting the deposit notification from the bank saying, we got payment from so-and-so.
Right.
Jackie's got that from somebody else.
Right.
So when Jackie gets that from somebody else, we have absolutely no idea when this stuff is actually hitting the bank.
Right.
So she's doing her reconciliation and her entries based on the email she's getting and all those.
Today.
Today. But now, it may have hit the bank last week, which in fact, one thing that Heather gave me last week, you know, I looked at the E F T and it had hit like the bank two days before Jackie recorded it. The other one hit like three or four days afterwards. So there's, there's no relationship between when it gets posted here and when it's actually hitting the bank.
So is the bank generating a deposit list?
No.
And we ask them to do that?
Well, I, and that, that's something that I don't know whether the bank can and can't do or, and they, they must be able to.
Right, they have to reconcile there.
See, all we see on our, I'm not saying they don't, it shows up on a deposit as a transfer.
Shows up on the monthly statement.
On the monthly statement, as an A C H. There's an A C H transfer. That A C H transfer could have three or four, eight different transactions within it.
I just don't know what.
We don't know what they are. And I don't know if they produce a detailed A C H list for every single transaction.
I mean, all you need to do is set the amount.
And if they can do that, obviously, the reconciliations is a whole lot longer to do because now you've got to go through all the bank stuff as well as the cash deposit, which is fine, but.
Well, I can't imagine, I wouldn't think it would take longer because you've got all the information in front of you. Rather try to dissect it.
Oh, yeah, I couldn't dissect it myself. There's no way I could go back and dissect it myself. If I had a report from the bank saying, this is what it is, then obviously I could go back to these deposits and tie each one where I have and say, okay, these have hit.
Jackie's reports, yeah.
So let me ask you two other questions, okay?
But, but the, I guess the other issue however, is that this is your book. I don't, I don't have the detail behind it after I give this back to you.
Right, but that's what I was going to ask. So I could make a copy of this and give you that separately.
Right, those would have to be included with, that's right, those would have to be included with every deposit.
Jack's copy.
Right, yeah.
Yeah, because that's what I kind of started to try to do with mine, is just to give him another printout so he can actually see.
And that, and that would probably be the solution to, to at least if we can get the information from the bank.
Right, because you've got the totals there. And, but the other question I have, does this help you when I give you this at the end of the month? This is all the daily work that's gone through for the month from the first, whether it's a Visa card, MasterCard, E T, E F T.
It, it.
Or doesn't it?
It, it, it doesn't yet because I don't know the detail from the bank again. The daily stuff is okay.
I won't waste my time.
The daily stuff is, the daily stuff is good, but I can't tie that into what the bank did because this is your stuff, not the bank's stuff.
Right.
So what you need is a monthly total of what kind of.
I need all the detail from the bank on every E F T transaction or A C H.
Jackie's already creating one list, you just need another list to.
To be pulled together, and that has to come from the bank because now that I know that you're posting from an email from somebody else, there's absolutely no relationship to what the bank is.
Right, yeah, the bank's not notifying us. It's this independent company that we, it's two different companies too. So that's, the other thing you have to understand that that's two different companies that Jackie and I use.
In terms of actually posting the A C H transactions into your system, it's kind of like maybe that the notification you get ought to go into a suspense file until you get notification from the bank that's actually hit. You know with the cash deposits, you take it down to the bank, it's in. But the other stuff is just out there floating around in the ether until somebody decides to grab onto it and put it in the account.
Or, or if Jackie doesn't want to get kind of full behind post posting. Let her, let her post them when they're supposed to be posted, when she gets notification. But have all the E F Ts, whenever you get an E F T posting, you do it on a separate, you know, not individuals necessarily. Say you get, you get an email that there's eight people that paid on a particular day.
Just put that in.
You put that in as a separate.
Right, like this.
Right, so, right, this page is just E F Ts.
There was no deposit.
Correct.
Right, 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 there was no deposit.
But nowadays, when you have a cash deposit and, yeah, two separate, two separate transactions.
And make you a copy of that.
Right, and then if we can get the deposit information from the bank on how they posted their E F Ts, then I can tie this page to the different pieces that they have. And that's the only, that's the only way I can see doing it. But I'm not sure who the bank contact is now. I know, I'm not sure if you guys know who the, who the bank rep would be at this point because I know.
The gal we set this up with is probably in a different job now.
Yeah, they all kind of move around now, so.
And there's Robin too that's down.
Easy enough to find that.
Yeah, I think if we can at least talk to the bank and say, okay, this is what we're up against. Can you give us detailed every E F T, A C H transaction?
Yeah, I can imagine it's hard to do.
I would push it up.
It's all computerized. They're recording them as they come in.
Right, right, but they're, they're recording them in batches which don't match anything that we're doing. And that's what the issue is. You know, they're, you know, she's recording one, one set of batches because that's what she's getting an email for. And then the bank is getting them, however they're getting them, they may be.
Depends who they get them from.
Well, yeah.
Right, exactly.
Right, they can be two or three, four days difference from when Jack is posting them on the bank side.
But it's, it's the amount. I mean, Jack is going to post the amount, we need to reconcile the amount.
Right, right, and that amount, however many transactions are, have to be reconciled to however many transactions the bank has put in to do the same thing. And that's really what the issue is. And it's only started since we've really taken, what, two, two, three years ago when we started taking E F Ts. That's where the, that's where the bottleneck is.
Well, I mean, I don't think it's, and you've been in the business a long, long time. I can't imagine it's that much different than reconciling a commercial account.
Well, it's a little, it's a little, well, usually, commercial accounts are, you're batching out, say, a credit card batch on a daily basis. Well, that hits the bank on one day. So all those, you've actually done it yourself.
You've done it, right.
Somebody didn't say, this is going to happen. You've actually done, so you've done your own batch.
It's the third-party.
Correct, exactly, yeah.
To the third party.
But it has to be, I have to deal with municipalities.
Right, right.
Because we're not doing.
Right, so, so I think if we can get in touch with the bank.
Well, I go, when I go to the bank today, I'll just ask what was working, who we should talk to.
Yeah, who we should talk to about, you know, getting some detail on all the A C H and E F T transactions within, within the deposits. And if we can get that, and I do think it's probably smart if we can start doing separate, you know, between cash and E F Ts.
Okay, and just, and just put the same date on, is it okay?
Yeah, the same date is fine.
Keep it separate, okay?
And that way I can reconcile the cash very easily and then the E F Ts as soon as we get something from the bank. It's just a matter of doing that piece of the reconciliation. Because up to this point, it's been impossible to tie those together.
You can do the gross.
And at the end of the month, you know, it's like, like last month, the, the end of the month reconciliation was off by, you know, like $21,000. Well, the $21,000 didn't necessarily concern me because I look back in and there's all kinds of E F Ts. Did they hit, didn't they hit?
But there's no way that you could say this $21,000 are E F Ts.
Right, because they were, they were combined with a cash deposit. And the only way I could take the cash deposit into the reconciliation was saying, yes, the whole thing posted. Well, maybe it didn't because the E F Ts were mixed in with it. So I said it posted, but maybe it really didn't. And that's why we're, that's where we're always off by a number.
Right. And, and from an auditing perspective, you don't know how big that.
And the other, and the other concern that, you know, when you do bank reconciliations from January until we're posting for year-end adjustments, they're off by a couple million bucks. Because the MuniSmart system only keeps the year-end balance as the bank balance on the bank reconciliations until after you close the year. So I can do, I can clear checks, I can clear all that stuff. But the bank reconciliation at the end of the day, until we do those year-end reconciliations.
So there's another, there's another period 13 in MuniSmart?
No.
It's not, probably not. Best software in the world is that.
You know, every accounting program I've ever worked with has that. You're just starting January 1st, you know, and you hit January 31st, it's the, it includes all the activity for January. Whatever adjustments you make in December will eventually run through. But in the meantime, January 31st balance is January 31st balance. Based on the information you know and all the activity within January, MuniSmart doesn't work that way. Their cash balance is December 31st cash balance until you make that final adjustment. And we didn't get the adjustments from the auditors this year until May or June.
Yeah.
So I'm doing the bank reconciliations and, you know, I really don't pay attention. I've cleared, I've cleared all the checks, I cleared all the deposits. And, and all the information going back and forth at the D M V, I clear them all because I have to. But at the end of the day, I'm off by two and a half, three million bucks because we're still dealing with these December 31st balances, which is nuts, it really is.
I have two, three million.
Yes, so those reconciliations in early part of the year have no relationship to anything other than we have cleared the checks and we have cleared deposits and all that. Now, going forward, we're going to be much more, much closer to what the actual reconciliation should be. And once we get the bank, if we can get the, the bank to give us that detail, we should be all ready to go. Should we go, we should, so. Cool, so I think we could, I think we can certainly solve their concern if we can get the information from the bank. If the bank says, we really can't do that, which I can't imagine they would. But if they did, then ask the auditors to give us some kind of guidance on how to, how to fix this.
Every municipality and state takes an audit.
They are.
Why don't you go into another tax collector conference?
I'm not.
I am September, I'm going to.
So ask around.
Just had my last week, so why don't you tell me before?
Why don't you ask them?
See, you, you know, I don't know if MuniSmart is the best solution for.
Because I don't do anything with MuniSmart other than foot my daily totals and, you know. I'm not like her that has to break it down and Diane and all that stuff. So I've got it all.
Right, yeah, right.
Yeah.
Yeah, it's probably a little bit updated by now.
So all of the E F Ts are going through Avatar?
Yeah.
Okay, maybe they've got a list.
I've got a list.
Oh, well, that doesn't tie them in the bank receives money, that's the issue.
Except they're part of it and they're transferred. Same with mine, mine all come through like by clerk works that I have now, it's online. And I get notification from them saying, you've got, you know, process, you know, and I go in and do the registration and all that. But then it actually, what Jack's saying, by the time it actually gets to the bank, it can be different times as far as that's concerned, so.
Yes, it's certainly much more complicated on Jackie's side than yours. You can get a certain, you have many, but it's the same issue.
Right, hers is a bigger dollar.
Same, same kind of issue.
Right, because I did almost. Eight hundred thousand so far this year online.
Yeah, I'm getting more and more, but.
Yeah, we've got this new assessment going. We're, we're getting a 30% increase in taxes next year, right?
No, decrease.
The tax rate should be coming down.
It will.
I looked at my assessment and I said, oh, that's, that's nice because I sold my house, but.
Yeah. That's what I had to keep reminding people is that, that your new assessed valuation doesn't, you can't apply the old tax rate and say.
But they don't need that bottom paragraph.
Right, right.
You know, one of the things, concerns I've had, just, you know, we all, I notice houses in Baltimore, you know, and they still have this $7, $8 tax rate or whatever that had over there. And her assessment keeps going up and up and up and up. And I keep saying that at some point, we're not going to be able to sell the house anywhere close to what the assessment is. Your assessment's way over the market value because you know, you.
Well, they like to have a low tax rate.
Well, yeah, well, a low, low tax rate, but then you've got a $350,000 house that you can only sell for $300 because that's the market.
Right.
So your tax rate is really low, but you can't sell it for what, you know, what is being taxed for. So I mean, does that find out?
Well, they're going through a revaluation this year too, so.
I think theirs is for 2020.
Yes, yeah, I think that's right. So that's next year, you'll see a tweak there.
And, and so that's, that's my story. I'm going to stick with it until we get an answer.
Okay.
Yeah, oh, that's good, I think if it's Megan, she'll know right off.
Any other treasury issues that we need to talk about?
Nothing from my standpoint. I'm getting everything I need from Jackie and from Heather and Diane. I see the, I do see the automatic deposits from the, from the state coming in. And those are kind of interesting too because they may post in the bank on the 31st. So I see that on the bank reconciliation. I haven't gotten anything yet from Diane because she hasn't gotten notice from the state yet. And she may post the following week, but backdated to the month before. So, you know, those things, but that's easy, that part's the easy part. This is a more complicated issue. I think in separating them would certainly help, but we have that detail from the bank in order to be able to tie things out. Because even if you separate them, to go back and try to tie them out after the fact, if we don't have anything from the bank, it's still going to be a bear.
You know, it's like the last day of the year. I close my books on the last day of the year. I can leave them open for 10 days, which I do. But as you say, with MuniSmart and whatever, if you make a correction January 5th, it's not reflected in the past one. And then I get here to work on January 2nd and somebody paid online at 11:00 PM on December 31st. And it's like, oh, God, that's, you know, that's.
So, yeah, so if she included a December 31st deposit with cash deposits that came in on the 2nd, but you want to date them for the December 31st. came in on the second, but you want to date them for December thirty-first, so that's all together, now, when did it actually hit the bank? Now, the cash deposit obviously didn't hit the bank, but did any of those E F Ts that you got notification on, were, were they sent on December thirty-first, or December thirtieth, but you didn't get notification until the second? You know, how are those pieces tied together?
All right, great, thanks for coming.
Oh, absolutely.
At your.
All right.
One more. Do we have any other?
When, when do we need to see you again?
Are you involved, is that an attachment at all?
No, no.
You can't blame them.
No, can't blame me if it goes off the can. Only really on my vote, town meeting, but I'm moved to do it.
All right, travel safe.
All right.
See you at all.
I'll be all right.
All right, take care, I have anything else we have to deal with. Do we have anything we need to non-public board today? Karen, do we have anything we need to non-public board today?
Um, nothing that's timely, I mean, unless you want to, you can, you can do it Monday.
I have time, if there's something.
It's up to you guys.
All right.
Yeah, let's go into non-public for nine-one-eight, whatever, 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 legal.
Legal?
Okay.
I'll second that.
Mark is a yes.
I'll be yes.